Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting in the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, September 22. If you're watching live on Monday, September 22, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. Our next regular meeting is two weeks from today. No, three weeks from today. Monday, October 13 at 8:00 p.m. with a work session at 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, that's correct.
October, wow.
October.
Right.
Sorry?
October is like now.
Yes.
It is like now.
Yes, it is.
So, the first order of business on our agenda tonight is a proclamation from the Village Board declaring Pleasantville a Purple Heart Village. And we are honored to have here with us tonight Eugene Lang, Sergeant in the First Air Cavalry and Junior Vice Commander of Chapter 21 of the Military Order of the Purple Heart. Have I gotten that right? All right. Let me invite you up, Mr. Lang, to give us a little background about the Military Order of the Purple Heart. Welcome and thank you.
Military Order of the Purple Heart. We are very active working with disabled veterans. Mostly, we spend a lot of time over in Montrose because there were things at one time, believe it or not, the VA used to do and they stopped doing. We pay for the people that are not allowed to leave. We pay for their haircuts. At one time, the VA would pay for their haircuts. Believe it or not, there's a bowling alley on the premises. They will not let them use it. They'll have them go over to West Point to go bowling. They'll pay for the bus. We pay for the bowling. We also do barbecues for them. We just did one in Memorial, I think it was Memorial Day, right? That was the last one. There was four of us there. And it was myself, my wife, we dragged them along, and my friend, he's the commander, and he dragged his wife along. And we cooked for 30 veterans. We barbecued. They all had a good time and we left. Recently, we sponsored another barbecue for another building. This time, we did not have to barbecue, but we had to pay for everything. We also go and we have colleges that collect clothes for us because there are a lot of veterans. They're not in best financial shape and they need help. I, myself, have gone over to some of the towns and picked up the clothes, taken it over to Montrose, and I gave it to them. And they, in turn, distributed to the veterans. We also collect things for the food pantry. And just recently, we just found out that people are asking for diapers. People are asking for baby formula, something we didn't even think about. And we're trying to get that thing organized. So, pretty much, you know, help out the less fortunate. And pretty much, that's what we're doing.
Impressive work. I have a proclamation. The key closing part of it is now therefore be resolved that I, Peter Shearer, the Mayor of the Village of Pleasantville, along with all of the members of the Village Board, hereby proclaim the Village of Pleasantville as a Purple Heart Village honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Certainly, good work you do, and we are pleased to have an opportunity to shine a little bit of light on the good work you do on behalf of veterans who have served our country so ably. So, we'll just hand that over to you.
If people wanted to donate diapers, baby formula, cash, clothes...
Thank you.
How do they go about doing that? I mean, I didn't understand that that was something you guys did and were even looking for.
All right. Usually, what happens is a town will set up a box. Right now, we've got a little problem because one of the fellows that used to have a truck that could get us a big box, well, I only have a car.
Yep.
Like, right now, believe it or not, Pound Ridge wants to set up something for us, but I can't get a box to them. That's my biggest problem. But what you would do is you would set up a box.
The VA can't even help you get a box?
We run our own. I mean, you've heard all these things that are going on in the VA. Believe me, you haven't heard everything. But the question is getting the box, that's not the hard part. The hard part is getting it to you. Because I have a car. And keep in mind, to be a member of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, you must have a purple heart. You have to have been wounded in combat. Like, I'm a Vietnam combat veteran. I was wounded in combat. We're a very elite organization. You cannot belong, like, you could belong to other organizations just have been in the service. With us, it's, you have to have a purple heart. And the problem is, there's just not enough. There's only about maybe 40 Purple Heart recipients in Westchester and Portnum County altogether.
Okay.
And I looked up your town, and I found two people. One is a World War II veteran and one is a Vietnam veteran. And the thing is, you've got to get younger people to help us.
Well, we decided to do it. I try to keep this a secret from our Recycles people, but I have a big truck and I would be happy to... I would be happy to help out with a box.
If you could get a box here and you let the people know, we'll come and pick it up.
Okay.
I've gone to other towns. I've picked up things. And I take it over to Montrose. I drop it off, either in the food pantry, or I drop it off with the clothing. And believe me, the veterans really appreciate it.
So, where would we put the box?
They'd be surprised.
Right in the lobby, here.
Yeah. We could do it here.
We could do that.
So, can, do you have, like, a list that we could put out or just...
If it's closed and it's reasonable, you know, we don't want anything that's torn.
Right.
Okay.
By all means, clothes. Food, I've taken Cheerios.
All right. So, maybe by the next meeting, we'll have the box and we can announce it.
We do different things each month.
I'll give you mine.
That's a great idea.
Food drive, a clothes drive.
Okay.
Right. But we need things like that. Well, we, the veterans do.
Yeah, no, that'd be great for us to do.
Well, the place is called Pleasantville for a reason, so you've come to a good place.
I'm sorry, my, one too many explosions. My hearing is not the best.
In the lobby?
All right. I thank you, sir. Very much appreciated.
I thank you.
Thank you very much.
My card.
Yeah.
On a, on a, on a related matter, our local...
Why don't you give your card to the clerk?
Our local Fantronic American Legion post, I know, was pleased that we would participate with the Military Order of the Purple Heart. And I am also happy to report that with the assistance of the American Legion Post and the Office of State Senator Greg Ball, we have a local veteran, Roger Lemke, who is being inducted into the 40th Senate District Annual Veterans Hall of Fame. So, a lot of you know Roger, and I dare say those of you who don't know Roger have benefited from his service. Among other things, he worked for the Village of Pleasantville as a motor equipment specialist for 37 years. But let me just give you a sense for this man and what he has done for this place. Ever since October 1, 1949, I have lived and worked in Pleasantville, New York. I graduated from Pleasantville High School in 1967, and I started working for the Village of Pleasantville. In 1968, I joined the D.P. Hayes Hose Company of the Pleasantville Fire Department. In 1969, I enlisted in the Army and married Jean Mizzola. In the spring of 1970, I was deployed to Vietnam with the 610th Engineers and was there for one year. Upon my return, I was stationed at West Point until 1972 and received an annual discharge in 1975. From 1974 to 1978, I was Lieutenant with the D.P. Hayes Hose Company, Captain of the company from 1978 to '80. I joined the American Legion Post 77 in 1976, the Pleasantville Dads Club in 1978. In 1984, Roger joined the American National Guard 101st Signal Battalion. He was appointed Assistant Fire Chief in 1995 for the Pleasantville Fire Department, served as the Chief of the Pleasantville Fire Department in 1999 to 2001, and hung around from 2001 to 2007 in the role of Deputy Chief. His Army and National Guard retirement adds up to 20.5 years of service at the rank of Staff Sergeant. So, as if that weren't enough, 2007, he decided to join the Pleasantville Ambulance Corps, was later elected Chairman of the Board of Directors. And I can report that annually, the Ambulance Corps has a dinner...
A great party.
A great party to install their new officers, but also to honor those people who have served. Obviously, everybody who has served, but when you hear the number of calls that people like Roger Lemke go out on in a given year, it's really quite, quite staggering. So, they broke the mold after they made Roger Lemke, except that there are a bunch of people like him, and there really could not be a more deserving person of this honor. And it's our pleasure on behalf of the Village and the Village Board to thank Roger for his services so many ways to this place. So, thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. I know some people have asked me, they've read in the press, about the recent controversies about the affordable housing settlement that Westchester County entered into with HUD now, what, five years ago, something like that?
2007, right?
Right. So, the recent activity is that there has been an argument between the County Executive's Office and the Monitor of the Settlement, who is a lawyer hired by HUD, about whether the county had adequately analyzed the zoning in the 31 communities that are part of this settlement, Pleasantville being one of them, to determine whether there was any exclusionary zoning based on a couple of specific tests, one of them being Berenson, and the other is...
Huntington.
Huntington. So, at any rate, there has been quite a bit of controversy about how this has all developed. There remains quite a bit of controversy. In the end, about two weeks ago, the Monitor issued a report that identified six communities which he believed had potentially exclusionary zoning.
It was a preliminary report.
Right.
The final report's not out yet.
I am happy to report that Pleasantville was not on that list, which does not in any way intend to imply ratification or not of the Monitor's effort, just that it's better not to have that problem. So, that is my report. Do you want anything to add, Mindy? I know you know a lot about it.
No.
No, you don't know a lot about it or you don't want to say anything?
No, I don't want to say anything. I'd be afraid of what I would say.
All right. Let the record show, trustee Barrett had no confidence.
Although I had lunch with the Monitor last week, so...
I attended the school board meeting last Tuesday where we were collectively talking about various responses that the Village can take, both to some recent events in the Village, but also to the general issue of alcohol and substance abuse in and around the Village of Pleasantville, which is obviously a problem everywhere. A new organization, a coalition called Pleasantville Strong is being cropped up. Colleen, you want to explain it?
Yeah, Pleasantville Strong, which stands for Safe Teens, Real Opportunities, and New Goals, is a newly formed coalition whose mission really is to create a safe, healthy drug and alcohol-free environment for our youth. The first step the coalition is taking, sort of first formal step, is a survey that's surveying parents in Pleasantville to find out what, you know, their feelings are about what goes on in town, what goes on with their children, what goes on, you know, with their neighbors. So, it's been sent out, and some people might have gotten it already, but it's on our Facebook page. So, if you go to facebook.com backslash Pleasantville Strong, you can find that survey. But one of the greatest things that has come out of the coalition is this, which is also on the Facebook page. It's laws every parent should know, and it talks about all of the underage drinking laws in Westchester County. And it's really something that every parent, no matter how old your child is, should take a look at and read. So, I would encourage you to do that and to go to our Facebook page and to fill out the survey. We really would like to hear from parents of all ages. It does ask what age your kids are, you know, are you past it? Are you into the 21? Are you just getting started? But I think it'll be valuable for the coalition to know what we need to do, what our next steps are. So, we encourage everyone to go to that Facebook page.
Just to add to that, it's an anonymous survey, too.
It is.
So, don't worry about that.
It is.
People are interested in getting your thoughts about this problem, not who you are, I think, right?
Yes.
I mean, you want the intelligence about what people are thinking about, different age groups and different... I took the survey, that's why.
Yeah. No, and it's, it's, a lot of thought went into it. There's, you know, about 16 stakeholders from the community that all, you know, have input into it of all age groups. So, you know, it works well. And I did want to correct something that I said at our last meeting. We were talking about a grant that this coalition is looking to get. It's a five-year grant. And I misspoke and said that we would know about it in December. We will know if we qualify for the grant in December. The qualifications haven't changed for years, but they don't officially come out until next year. I mean, excuse me, December, and then we'll know from there. But the coalition's been in existence since June, and we hope to keep it going and really make an impact for all of the kids in town.
Thank you.
That's good stuff.
I know lots of you know this, and Colleen mentioned it last time, but one of the real moving forces behind this has been John Mueller, who's a captain of the Yonkers Police Force and blessedly a resident here in Pleasantville. And he has spearheaded a couple of great things and has also an awful lot of experience.
He sure does.
So, thank you, John, not only for your energy, but he's proven himself to be a pretty good Pied Piper, to get an awful lot of people in line with him, so...
Yeah.
Our friends at the Recycling Committee, PleasantvilleRecycles.org, are back to their Halloween tricks, which is a great story. The spooktacular Halloween costume swap at the Memorial Plaza Gazebbo Saturday, October 4, October 11, and October 18. From 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., bring gently-used and clean Halloween costumes. Go home with some, with something new to wear. If you can't get there on Saturday during the farm market, which I encourage you to attend along with it, you can also drop off your costume collection at the rec center. She says 48 Manville Road. Why does she say that?
Where is the collection?
Says, the poster says Advanced Costume...
It's 48 Marble Ave.
It's Marble Ave, yeah. 48 Marble Ave. I have to point that out to get that poster changed. At any rate, you can drop off stuff if you can't, if you can't attend on Saturday, you can come on Friday, October 3, from 8:30 to 4, and drop stuff off there, too. It's actually a whole lot of fun to watch parents and kids imagining what they might be for Halloween and coming home with something new. And as if the whole story weren't good enough, whatever is left over gets donated to Blackdale Children's Hospital to make Halloween a little brighter for kids who are suffering. So, great news, more great stuff from our Pleasantville Recycling Committee. And then, in our rambling comments, Patty and I attended an emergency planning session that the county ran, the second such thing this past week. And it's sort of a decision-making training process to talk about all kinds of things. The previous session was mostly focused on storm events. This one, more focused on the possibility of cyberterrorism, but difficult stuff for all of us to talk about, but important for all of us to talk about, recognizing just, for example, you know, the very day of that event, there had been, you know, I think, an almost unprecedented-scale data breach with a couple of retailers. So, just want to let you know that we spend quite a bit of time thinking about how we can be better prepared, and certainly, I think, have had some lessons learned from Sandy, have not done everything we could do if money were no object. But I think we've taken some pretty important strategic steps since, including changing some wiring in this building to expand the capacity of the generator that helps to run Village Hall and securing a bunch of things that would have made our lives a little easier in the example of Sandy, which is a great segue to remind everybody that the most important thing you could do today is go to our website, Pleasantville-NY.gov, click in the left-hand column on the Code Red symbol, and sign up for the Code Red Emergency Notification Service. It's a subscription service that we have paid for on your behalf that gives us the opportunity to reach out to you in all kinds of ways. You choose them, landline, cell phone, text message, email, giving us multiple ways to reach residents or those who are concerned about residents in the Village of Pleasantville. We will only use it for emergency purposes. You won't be getting news about water bills or soccer games through this medium, just emergencies, and it would enormously help all of us if every last person in the village could go to Pleasantville-NY.gov, click into Code Red, and sign up. If you don't have internet access, you can call Village Hall, and they'll walk through the process of taking your information and entering it on your behalf. So, anything else, you guys?
How about our safest place to live?
Oh, yeah.
Pleasantville was ranked as the fourth safest town, although we're a village, in New York by home security vendor Safe Choice Security. It said, I love this, overall Pleasantville was rated safer than 93% of cities in America. Pretty impressive, so, kudos to our police department as well.
That is true.
Did we ever know, did we ever find out if that was adjusted for population? Because some of the towns that beat us are, like, massively larger than we are, and I think if you adjusted it for population, we'd probably be higher than...
Oh, maybe.
I don't know. Perhaps we should challenge the methodology.
Get into that one. Get on that, would you?
Yeah, I'll get there.
That would be good. Can we have a motion to put Steve on it? The certainly happy news, whatever the methodology is, and it reinforces, I think, what we already knew. And I can report what I think we all see who sit at this table. There are an awful lot of circumstances where the Village of Pleasantville Police Force not only responds to people in need very quickly and very humanely, but also proactively addresses some problems before they turn into something bigger. So, small-town policing is difficult from a cost standpoint. As you all know, we've talked about it, and we'll talk about it again in our forthcoming budget. But I can also report, and I think all of us would agree, that amid the difficulties of sustaining a small police force, it also delivers quite a few benefits. Just wanted to announce that the Village Hall offices are closed on Columbus Day, Monday, October 13, for the Annual Records Management Day? That sounds exciting, Patty.
It hasn't been annual, but we haven't done it in quite...
It says annual here.
Well, going forward, we'd like to keep it that way, but we haven't done it in many years.
We annually do records management.
Yeah. That's true. We haven't closed for it.
This is the first time we had a major.
It's pretty messy.
So, you know, bring us into what this is like. You, you know, you all wear party hats and go through files all day?
Order some pizza. Yeah, that's about right. We go through everything and purge what we need to purge, shred what we need to shred, and that's basically it. I make sure everything's organized. We have records retention, you know, obligations by law. We have to keep certain things in perpetuity, so we have to make sure that they're stored properly. Other things, we have disposition schedules. Everything is very well organized. Judy has everything down to a science.
A legal process that they have to follow.
That is correct, yeah.
They have a log, a documented log, and you have to...
Yeah, there's a form.
Yeah, every box is marked as to when they can be disposed of, what the content is. We have the master filing system. We have things in different places. We'd like to reorganize that as well. We'll need to buy some more racks when this is all over with to do more stories.
Well, if we're edging increasingly paperless, although there's an awful lot of stuff that has to be kept in paper and has to be kept for a very, very long time, if not forever, right?
Well, not in paper form, but in some.
Some format.
Like death records and all that sort of stuff have to be kept forever, right?
That we don't have too many.
Personal records are...
I mean, we can't, we would like to change the medium and not carry so much paper, but that's expensive. We've looked at all kinds of other microfiche, microfilm, DVDs.
But the technology changes so often, so it's, we really have to keep up with it because we microfiche quite a lot of documents and...
And we don't have a reader.
And now, microfiche is a...
Well, I have a reader, but it's very difficult getting parts for, to replace it, so...
Shane, you might want to consider a feature-length film about Annual Records Management Day. Sounds like it's going to be...
So, it is Columbus Day, but we're open on that day anyway. It's a floating holiday, so the rest of the village is in motion. There'll be sanitation pickup, you know. We'll have a meeting that night, or a meeting that evening. It's just the office is closed.
Why did we skip a week, Lake?
Sorry?
Why did we skip a week? I don't know.
Columbus Day.
Why did we skip? We're not skipping. That's the second...
No, this is three weeks.
Well, we have five Mondays this month, that's why. This month has five Mondays, so it threw everything off a little bit.
Yeah, I got screwed up there.
So, then, the last thing I had on my list is that in work session, before we start a regular session, we had an extended conversation with a couple of folks, including our beautification committee. And all of us, I think, are uniformly of the view that the community needs to up its game a bit on keeping things clean and litter-free. We're certainly going to try to undertake a campaign to encourage everybody in the downtown district, including storefront owners, to keep their sidewalks clean, patrons of stores, and people who use the downtown to look for a trash can instead of a gutter. I was quite amazed by the extraordinary amount of trash that had simply been thrown all over the field under the bleachers after the high school football game this past Saturday. And the folks of the school district clean all that up, but they shouldn't have to. So, we're going to be putting together a little bit of a pressure point campaign to try to focus on that issue. I think if everybody plays a part, the world will clean itself up pretty nicely, but more on that soon. All right? Anything else? Any oral communications? Any call-in, 769-1677? With that, we'll go to the resolution, Ms. Colleen, 144.
Resolve that pre-check register dated September 22, 2014, covering pre-check number 78790 through 78903, has been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below, coming from the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Capital Fund, the Refuge Fund, the Pool Fund, and the Trust and Agency Fund, totaling $547,506.59.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions about the check register?
I had a quick one.
Okay.
The, for Vinco, the pool renovation, is that the total number? Are we paying that?
It's the first installment.
We wish, but it's nice to see it started.
So, that would be, it's overhead, the bonds, and the insurance.
Okay, so that's the prepayment in a sense?
Yes. Well, their first voucher is always to cover their costs of mobilization and insurance and bonding.
Good. Thank you.
But they're underway. I mean, we have a tremendous amount of demolition...
They're peeking in the windows. I know I'm going to be on the TV cameras.
Yes. Yes.
Who is that?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 145, Mindy.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, September 8, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or corrections on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 146.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Michael Newman to the Civil Service Position of Recreation Leader effective September 22, 2014, at an annual salary of $46,319. As per the rules and regulations, the Westchester County Department of Human Resources, an appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a maximum of 52 weeks.
Mike has been with us for a little over a year now, right, Patty?
Yes.
So, you want to describe what's going on here?
Yeah. Mike came to us, as you say, a little over a year ago. He was hired as a recreation attendant and encouraged to sit for civil service exams. He had taken three tests. He'd passed all three. We were able to canvas the list for Recreation Leader and reach him on that list. So, we're delighted to offer him an opportunity now to graduate up the scale of, in responsibility and, obviously, in functions here for the village. He's done a great job. He's been well-received and well-respected by the community and department and all of us here. And I'm delighted that, you know, he's well on his way to becoming, you know, a very key part of our staff here in Pleasantville. So, when he does get appointed this evening, he'll be able to have a one-year probationary period, and at that point in time, he'll have a permanent position in a competitive class of civil service.
All good news? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion...
Just a second.
Oh, sorry. 147.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the reassignment of Kristen Surrace?
Surrace.
Surrace back to the position of part-time intermediate clerk effective 15 September, 2014, pending results of the continuous recruitment exam at a salary of $2545 per hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
This also is a civil service event?
Well, we're waiting, yeah, we're waiting for an opportunity to appoint Kristen from, from a civil service list. We, we, we did not have an opportunity to appoint her to the position of Office Assistant, I think it was Financial, Financial Support. She passed that test. She, she did very well in that test, but we, we felt her position on the test would not allow her to be reached. So, she is sitting for two more exams actually this week. And we'll have those results immediately because they're continuous recruitment. So, we're hoping that, you know, we have a better opportunity with these exams to, you know, to grab her.
So, they, they put the list up right away, like, it's a revolving list?
Yes, the continuous recruitment, they come out immediately, and within seven days, they become effective. So, we'll be able to know within a week where we are with this.
Many of you know Kristen, if you've ever appeared at the window in the court clerk's office. And she has assisted you in paying a parking ticket or something of the sort, for which we thank you very much.
She's been with us for several years, as you know, and has done a very good job.
She certainly has and presents a very positive face there. So, and has been a great assistant to Stephanie Austin, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. We have an additional resolution, 148, that was added after the agenda was posted.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the amended Fuchester, Inc. agreement clarifying terms of the, of the village's capital equipment contribution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Really minor change here, right, Patty?
Yeah, I'll explain. There's nothing different in the, in the amount. We obligated ourselves to a $2,500 contribution. However, we were going to buy the capital equipment. This just makes it easier for us to, to, to do this, not, not to have to go through a reimbursement basis and not to have to go out and do the vending, but to provide a $2,500 capital contribution.
And then they buy the capital.
That is correct, because, because it's on their books, anyway.
Point, point one has us with 2013 season doing startup costs again.
Yeah, we left this in here because this is the original agreement. We just amended number two.
And that has already happened.
Right. So, so this whole, you just attach this because it's just this first page? No, I'm not understanding that.
No, this is, this is the entire agreement.
Item two is the thing that changed on this page.
It was negotiated back in 2012.
Okay, so it runs through the 2015.
That's right.
And you amended $2,500.
Only section two.
Right, and it's the same amount. It's just that instead of us buying 20, we're...
I was a little concerned that I thought, I thought we were renewing our contract, because we used to do that on a yearly basis with the farmers' market. But I guess because it's this new agreement, it's a three-year?
Yes, we kept it.
It did three years.
The board entered to a three-year agreement. We're only clarifying that one term.
Okay.
I left the rest in just for historical reference, so.
All right, thank you.
Patty, are you, are you doing it as an amendment to the executed document, or redoing the document?
We're doing it as a...
As an amendment.
Yeah, we could do it as an amendment. I think that's how the...
We're not redoing the whole document.
How the resolution meets.
Yeah.
It's been amended. This is the amended agreement.
Authorizes you to sign the amended...
It's just that it's a little confusing, isn't it?
Right.
I agree with you, Stephen. It's, it was a little confusing to me that it just, you know.
Right.
So, I guess maybe we can, I don't know if you put that in italics or...
What we could do, we can, we can put the original agreement, we can strike the...
Just make an amendment. Paragraph two is hereby amended as follows, blah, 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 blah.
Right.
And both sign it. But the original agreement should stay the original agreement.
I think it's good to note it, that we made this a change in, in September of 2014.
Right.
So, there's no, if you go for historical data, you go back, yeah. I agree with you, Steve.
All right. All in favor of 148?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion approved. That is the last of our agenda items. Does anyone have any new business to bring up?
I actually had something I wanted to mention again. I mentioned it the last meeting, but since we're not going to do it again. The Pleasantville VIP Kind Fine Registration will be held on Wednesday night, October 1, at the rec center from 6:30 to 8:00. Our Kind Fine program is a program for children who have mental and physical challenges. We ask some particulars, and we register your child at the police department. So, in the event a first responder is called to your home or to a situation where they are required, the police and the firefighters and the PIVAC have more information to help those children and young adults. So, again, that's October 1, Wednesday, 6:30 to 8:00, at the rec center.
Thank you for that. Then, the last thing I wanted to report is all of us got today our paper copies of the annual audit for the year ended May 31. It is largely good news. When, when are the auditors coming to go through?
They'll be here on the 13th.
Okay. So, at our next meeting, we'll be going through the, the village audit.
At 7:30, there'll be a presentation by the actuaries about OPEB. And then at 8 o'clock, O'Connor-Davies will be here to present the audit. So, there'll be some additional discussion during the work session on the other post-employment benefit report.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night. Thank you, see you on October 13.